Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our work session. Today, we have two presentations on our agenda. Our first presentation will be to receive a presentation of the FY22 budget priorities and to discuss the budget process with that bill.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We are here today to discuss the FY22 budget process and priorities. Let me grab, can we take this? Okay, so kind of an agenda for our presentation today. We're going to do a preliminary financial summary and outlook, discuss the 22 budget process, the priorities, and then also the timeline. So one of the things I handed out is a hard copy of our monthly report as of January, which is where a lot of these numbers are going to come from. And this is also available on the county finance department's website each and every month. But I wanted you to have that because that's where we're going to pull a lot of the numbers as we talk about the financial summary and outlook. Okay. All right. All right, so just real quick, the big focus of our budget is always in the general fund. So I kind of wanted to give you an idea of how we're trending so far this year through January. And I have the operating revenues up there as well as the operating expenditures. And this, although you see the operating expenditures significantly outweigh the operating revenues, this is nothing out of the ordinary because of the timing of our property tax collections. But what this does do is give us a good understanding of kind of how the pandemic has impacted us thus far in the general fund. So what we're already looking at is if you look at the revenue side, you're looking at 100 point, or 100.3 million through January of last year versus 97.5 million the same point through this year. We have seen a little bit of a slowdown on the expenditure side, but it's not nearly as significant as what we're seeing on the revenue side. So we're going to talk about some of the specifics of those as we've kind of moved forward. All right, so some of the things that are driving those, we know we have the moratorium on the property tax penalties and interest. This is having an impact on us in a couple of different areas, but it's roughly a $3.4 million pullback in revenues. So this is affecting our prior year property taxes as well as over a million dollar, million point five of our penalties and interest that we would have collected at the same time through last January. So this does have an impact, but we know that this was done to assist the community during this time of need, but this is just a financial impact as a result of that. One of the other areas that we're seeing is because of the economy, you've seen a lot of feds, the feds have cut the interest rates, so this has impacted our interest earnings, even though we have, you know, roughly a similar cash balance that we did in previous years, this is impacting us here as well, which is about another $1.1 million reduction. One of the areas that we also trend very, or watch very closely is our commercial building permits. This is something that we see as the economy slows, you'll start to see this, this is one of the first indicators. So we are seeing a little bit of a slowdown on the commercial side, about 600,000, but the residential remains strong. So that's one of the big areas of Cobb County, and that's one of the areas that we're hoping will bring us some good news this spring when Steve White and the Tax Assessor's Office provides us a digest update. With that being said, we are starting to see that slowdown on the commercial permitting side, and we do anticipate a little bit of a pullback on the commercial property side. But just as a reminder, we did budget zero digest growth for 2021. So we did take a very conservative approach as we move forward, so just kind of keep that in mind as we go, as we go through these. One of the other areas that we're seeing is a significant reduction in fines. This is something that's been trending down for several years, but due to the pandemic and the impact on the court system, this has definitely impacted our fine revenue in the tune of roughly $1 million as a reduction through January. And then just also as an additional reminder, we did reduce the water transfer rate from 9% to 8% for 2021. Each percent reduction is roughly $2.5 million. Okay, so that's kind of the revenue overall picture of the general fund, but some of the things to keep in mind as we move forward through the year. These are some additional funds on the right that are going to have a negative impact on the general fund as we go forward. I don't think any of these will be any big surprise. Parking deck revenue, obviously, due to the pandemic, you're having less visitors to the square, less impact to the parking deck. So this is something that we know will have a general fund impact on the subsidy as we move forward. We'll have to watch and see how travel and tourism and square activities rebound during the spring and summer months. Hopefully, with the vaccine, this is something that we can look into and move forward with. But through January, October through January, we're down what, about $130,000 in comparison from this year to last year. So that gives you an idea of October through January last year when we were not in a pandemic versus October through January this year when we are in the midst of a pandemic. And if we, obviously, all of us have been to the parking deck, you can see the, plenty of spaces that are available. So that's, that's one of the big pullbacks. And obviously, the courts have an impact on that as well. The law library is another one. This is a small dollar amount, but it will have an impact. This is driven by fines and court cases. It's roughly down $40,000 to date, and that is something that will have to be made whole through the general fund as we move forward. But as court cases start to rebound and we start to get out of this backlog, this is something we do anticipate will eventually rebound, but this is something we'll have to watch closely. Hotel motel taxes. So we took a very conservative approach with the hotel motel fund, and basically, what we're only paying out of this, this fund this year is to cover the performing arts center debt service. With that being said, we're down roughly $2 million to date from this time last year. So again, non-pandemic, October through January through a pandemic, Jan, October through January. So it does have a negative impact. We're going to watch this closely, and, you know, as, as things start to rebound, hopefully this spring and summer, there is a potential to make up some of this difference and not have an impact on the general fund. But if the pandemic continues and it's still heavily impacting hotel stays, this will be something that general fund will have to look at addressing and covering that debt service payments. Okay? And then likewise, the Cumberland Special Service District One, our $3 room night fee. So we took a, basically cut this out of funding the debt service this year pretty much. So we have a few items in there that are going to be covered, and we don't anticipate a general fund impact in '21. But obviously, depending on how long this impact from the pandemic goes on, this will be something that we would have to monitor if this continues to show the negative impacts of travel and tourism. Any questions on this slide? I kind of went through that a little quickly before we move on. Yeah, everybody good? Okay. Okay. So we're going to jump into the FY22 budget process. Since FY22 is the second year of the biennial process, it's typically not open back up for departments to submit additional requests. As a starting point, the finance department recommends using the FY21 adopted expenditure budget for the FY22 baseline, incorporating adjustments for prior BOC-approved agenda items, increasing for healthcare, pension, et cetera. From this point, we'll begin to consider board priorities. So this is the recommendation is what we propose to move forward and kind of give you an idea of the agenda items that the board has already approved that will have a negative impact on the FY22 budget. It's about $1.4 million already this, so far this year that will have an increase to FY22. And if anybody would like to get a copy of those or know specifically what agenda items those are, we're happy to provide those as well. So this is kind of what we're asking is because of the unknown situation, this is what we'd ask as a baseline. We're going to take the, proposing to have the FY21, copy, paste, use that as a baseline, and start making adjustments from there versus opening up the process, which we typically don't do in a biannual. And we have financial uncertainty with the revenues as we move forward. So that's kind of what we've asked, and just would love to get any feedback on, at that at this time, or we can save that for the end. It's completely up to you. At the end, okay, perfect. Okay, so kind of the unique thing, and we talked a little bit about this at the retreat. We thought about how we'd handle this in a normal year, and I think what we heard pretty consistently from the board is we want to know what the needs are, we want to know what the requests are. So if we're not going to be opening in it back up for the additional requests, we need to make some decisions first on where we stand on some of the major revenue priorities that would, that are going to impact the money that we have available in FY22. Obviously, the biggest, biggest one of those is the millage rate, general fund, fire, debt service, Cumberland Special Service District, and Six Flags. So the thought process here is if we remain stable with these, and then we'll obviously get an estimated digest growth update from Steve White this spring. And currently, we're sitting at an 8% water transfer. Community Development's proposing a fee schedule adjustment to help sustain some of their position requests. And then we know on the horizon, we're looking at a water rate increase which would potentially, which would be impacted by the decision on the water transfer. So if we go, stay at 8% or go up, that would negatively impact the water rate transfer, or the water rate increase, meaning that would, they would ask for additional funding. And then there also is the question of the stormwater utility. So these are the major principles that we're going to need some, some guidance on as we move forward, and this is going to drive your delta number of kind of what your revenues look like versus what you have available for priorities and additional funding. Okay. So with that being said, based on the current revenue assumptions, millage rate, estimated digest growth, reductions in water transfer, and other economic factors, the county is currently projected to have limited revenue growth in FY22. The board wishes to continue with these assumptions, there will not be adequate resources available to consider implementing most of the priorities that we'll be discussing on the next few slides. But we'll go over these. These are more of a holistic approach of based on not opening it up, but based on the feedback we've received from the departments and the board already, this is kind of give you a menu item, so the major ticket items that would be up for consideration. But one of the things I want to address is, for example, in the general fund, if we get this spring and we come back, that digest growth, that's roughly $5 million. Pension and healthcare alone, we eat that up, so that basically your delta is then zero. So that's kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. In a typical year, we're anywhere from 4% to 5%, which is, well, not a typical year. In a normal positive year, that's where we are. But a 2% growth is roughly five and a half million, and between pension and healthcare, that's gone. Okay. Okay, so some of the priorities that we heard from the retreat, and these are, you notice there's no dollar values here because these could be done a million different ways and all have different dollar values. So really, what we're looking for from the board here today is the major category levels. So like, for example, employee retention and recruitment, is that a priority? Here's some menu options that would fall under those, but we're not necessarily saying, hey, we want X, this one, for example, merit, at a 3% or 4% or whatever that may be. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for, is this a priority? So when we bring back the updated revenue projections, we can already know which categories to focus in on and start giving you detailed menu options with costing. For example, if we do a merit in October versus doing a merit in March, those have different numbers. If you do a 1% versus a 3%, those have different numbers. So we'll work with you on every one of these, basically, we want to know kind of high level, what are your priorities as we move forward? And we're going to give you the list that we've already identified, but also ask for your specific priorities that may be not on this list. Okay? So as just kind of we go through these, employee retention and recruitment, we're looking at some of the things we heard at the retreat. Merit increased to defined contribution pension plan for the hybrid employees. Continuation of step and grade, address compression within public safety. Those are just a few of the items we heard, but wanted to kind of give you a refresher to some of the items we discussed. Although we're not opening it up yet, the staffing levels, this is one of the things I think you heard at the retreat, but just to kind of give you an idea of what that already looks like. Without a full open budget process, I have a request for 84 positions in the general fund. Just the personnel cost for those is $6.3 million, not to mention the operating capital costs that would be associated with those. So here are a few of the departments that are listed. Outside of, outside of the general fund, we have requests from fire and water as well with additional price tags. Okay, so the capital replacement and maintenance, this is something that was struck, reduced from the FY21 budget, and we had worked for several years to build, to start to build this back in. Vehicle replacement is a, is a key function that we have to maintain our fleet as well as our facilities. So this is a minimum recommendation that we will look at, and this is a staff priority to reinsert back into the adopted budget. But obviously, the levels of which those could be sustained at is based on the money available and the priorities of the board. For example, vehicle replacement this year, when the board adopted the capital replacement in December, we did $5 million, which we believe is sustainable. We did 2.5 million of that for PD, 500,000 for sheriff, and the remainder for all county departments. So that's just kind of give you an idea of what we, what fleet believed was sustainable at that time. And then we have some additional requests from the DA's office, grand jury room, and data center. That comes with a price tag about a 420K. So there's, obviously, these have different levels based on what's available, and we had no capital replacement in the FY20 budget with the exception of PD had a million dollars, sheriff had a million dollars, and DA had a small amount, I think it was 150,000 or so, for some renovations. But we have to get back to maintaining our facilities, and that can be done through the adoption process, or the board can choose to take that out of full balance at the end of the year. Obviously, the goal is to get back to making that part of the adoption, though, not a wait-and-see approach and see what's available. Okay. All right, some additional requests. I think you heard a lot of these at the retreat, so again, these shouldn't be some, any major surprises. Increase community Ferris unit, real-time crime center, remodel and expand the 800 megahertz department, body cameras and training for animal services, a facilities assessment. And then one of the items that we worked with Sheriff's Office on is ongoing cost for tasers and body cameras. This is, again, this is, this is not considered capital because the individual items are not $10,000 or more, but this would be an ongoing replacement schedule, so it's very similar to capital replacement, just a little bit lesser cost. And then we had a request for increase in cybersecurity. The fire fund is in a unique situation. They didn't have any capital this year. They were able to bring some back using full balance. This is something that we'll want to heavily discuss as we move in FY22 because we cannot continue to collect the debt service fund millage rate in FY22. FY21 will be the last year. We'll have sufficient funds to pay off our GO bonds, and this is one of the areas that we're looking at as a proposal for the board's consideration, is to shift that point, or 0.13 mils from the debt service fund to the fire fund. That's going to be approximately $4 million that will be added to the fire fund. Due to their step and grade plan, they have not been able to adopt a capital plan. So that, this is one of the unique items that we're going to have to look at moving forward. And please keep that in mind as we have discussions about step and grade moving forward, merit, what have you, is that we typically look at the general fund, but other funds can be negatively impacted, and without having that flexibility on revenue, it may not be sustainable, and which, fire is a perfect example of one of those cases.
Bill, can you just clarify?
Yes.
That consideration would be for FY22 for the, shifting those funds for the debt service?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you. And I was going to touch on this a little bit later, but this is a perfect time. So this July, and we'll go through this on the timetable a little bit, this July, we're going to be adopting two things. We're going to be adopting the FY21 millage rate for the budget that was set last July. In the same meeting, we're going to adopt the FY22 budget. Now, what we typically do is we use the same millage rate that you just approved in FY21 that we'd use for FY22. This year, we cannot do that for the debt service fund because legally, we cannot collect that. So that's why we're asking, please keep that in mind as we have these discussions, because that decision will need to be made by this July. So for example, this July, let's say all the millage rate stays the same, you will adopt a debt service millage fund of .13 mils, but the budget would be zero for FY22. And then next July, you'll have to come back and adopt that millage rate. Okay? So that, that's a great question, because this year, usually they're, they're very similar. This year will be a little bit different because of that, that restriction.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do you want us to ask questions with Bill on his own?
For clarification, yes. Thank you for asking. Yes, please, if there's any question that you have regarding his presentation, please do. There was just one moment of his presentation where he was going to ask for direction based off of the priorities shared from staff, and I would just ask, we wait till the end of the meeting to address that. But anything else, yes, please feel free to address.
And we, we have been talking about this, the debt service going away the end of this fiscal year, and the reason we're asking that it go back to the fire fund is because we took about the same amount, .1 mil, 1.3 mils, from the fire fund in '16 or '17?
Yes, Commissioner. The fire fund's millage rate has actually been reduced twice since we went up during the recession. So it's been reduced twice, and this is, this, this is the impact. It's become unsustainable. So you're exactly right. We have been having this discussion for a couple of years now, just letting everybody know it's coming. And, sorry, go ahead.
And, and that would just be shifting, just like we shifted the debt service for the Braves to the general fund.
Yes.
Years ago.
And, and just to add to one point for this, this will actually have a positive impact for any employ, any, any citizen who lives within a city's limits who has a fire fund. For example, if I live in the city of Marietta who has fire, I don't pay the county's fire millage rate, but I do pay the debt service. So by shifting this, if you live in the city limits who has fire services, you will see a .13 mil reduction to your tax bill. That's, that's something that is to, just as a reminder, it's based on, if you live in a city limit who has fire, you will not pay this shift.
Okay. And then going back a few slides on the water transfer.
Yes.
Just to clarify, if, if that stayed at eight, or if that went back to 10, like it did in '16.
Sure.
We had to start all over again, then that would cause the water increase to be more?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, because it sounded like you were saying there, it would...
You're, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. If, if that stays at eight or goes back to something higher, that would increase the water rate request to something higher than it normally would have been.
And if we reduced it by the 1% and stayed on track, what we're trying to do to decrease it by 1% each year, that would be less of an increase in the water fund?
That is correct.
Hopefully.
Yes, and working very closely with water, and as they submitted their long-term plans with the rating agencies, we've walked through that, is the plan is to continue to reduce that, and that is built into their models. So if that does change, that would have, you're correct, a, a higher impact on the water rate increase that will be proposed.
Okay.
And then again, 1% is roughly $2.5 million per year. So it's not, in the big scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but it's not an insignificant amount of money either. Okay? Yes, Commissioner?
Just to add on, Commissioner Burrell, in 2018 in June, when the Water Department did the presentation to the, the board at that time, it included a 10% transfer to the Board of Commissioners in the increases that was proposed and then adopted by the board at that time in September of 2018. So it was always anticipated that the county was going to take that full 10% transfer with the rate increases that were passed on to the citizens.
And, and that's one of the unique challenges with this, is that if, as this continues to move around, as you do, you know, five, 10-year projections for these, if the plan is, the current direction is to reduce that, that's built into those projections. As the board makes that, maybe makes a change to that, then those projections are redone, and that's where you're going to have the impact on your water rates. So that, that is just something that, based on the, the board's direction each year, we obviously plan out accordingly, whatever that plan would be. And the board has the ability to shift on that, any, just like any other board vote, you can make the decision one year and then shift priorities for the next year, and that's fine, but those priorities will have an impact on the projections for the water fund, as well as the general fund in this case, because obviously, the, the transfer comes into the general fund. Okay. Any other questions on this slide? Good? Okay. Okay, so we, we've touched on these, and then really, this is kind of where we'd like some additional direction. So we have additional priorities from the board. You've kind of seen the priorities that were presented at the retreat, kind of went over those at a high level today. One of the items that came out of that is the diversity and inclusion officer. That was something that was considered in FY21. It was kind of put on the back burner, and I think it is, it is, it has come to our attention that as a priority as we move forward. So we went ahead and added it here, but we'd love to hear from the board, is there anything that you have heard, either, you know, from staff or from your citizens or personally, that you feel like needs to be added to this as we start to kind of craft what the budget looks like?
This request came up last year. Can you talk about how funds may have been or may not have been set aside for this?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So this request was, as, as Chairwoman Cupid said, this request was brought to our attention last year. It was, it was in and out of the budget process a few times, and basically because we did, we had a, we had a direction not to add any positions, but this was still a high priority. What we believed, what we, what we felt was best to leave it in the BOC undesigned contingency, which has a million dollars in it, and that it could be brought back at any time at the board's direction as a one-off, because this was, this was something that was, like I said, in and out of the budget a few times. And ultimately, what we said is there's plenty of money in the BOC contingency, and if the board wishes to bring an agenda item forward to approve this, we can easily do that, appropriate the funds, and then it'll be part of the reoccurring budget process as we move forward. Versus putting an individual line in there to say, we're going to do the diversity and inclusion officer and adding it at the budget adoption, there just wasn't enough support at the time to do that. But we, we heard it was a priority from several of the board members, just I don't believe at the time of budget adoption, we had consensus to add it.
Okay.
So we did leave that as an option for the board to bring it back at any time. Okay. Is there anything that anybody would like to add to this slide that has come to your attention that we haven't already discussed?
Bill, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm trying to quickly pull, pull your presentation from last year.
Sure.
But if I recall correctly, you removed the county manager's contingency and also the board of commissioners' contingency last year, which for the new members is $30,000 for the county manager, and it was a million dollars for the board of commissioners. But that was removed from contingency, if I recall, correct?
So, yes and no. So I'm explaining that. So that's a great question. So the, the prior, previous year, for 2019, we had a unit that was called General Fund Contingency and Admin, where we put every contingency within the general fund. And we received direction, and I believe from the majority of the board, specifically from Commissioner Odd at the time, that they did not like that. They did not like that we had one unit that was just contingency and admin, so they asked us to break out these contingencies. One of the items we had in there was the Braves Debt Service, because it doesn't belong to any department, per se. So what we received direction on is this, hey, okay, well, we're going to create a new unit for Braves Debt Service, and we're going to begin moving the contingencies out of the contingency and admin unit to the individual departments. So that's exactly what we did. So the BOC contingency is still in the general fund, it's just not in the general fund admin bucket. So there's a million dollars of BOC contingency still out there, and the 30,000 for the, the county manager's contingency is housed within the county manager's budget itself. So a lot of the contingencies remained, but they were, the direction was to move them out of the catch-all and put them with the individual departments. And let me help you try to explain that a little bit better. Perfect example was the contingencies that we set up specifically for step and grade. In years past, we would have put those in the general fund admin contingency with every other contingency on the planet and identify those and say, this is what it's for. So, but, but based on the direction from the board, we specifically put those in, PD's budget, sheriff's budget, and fire's budget, so that you can see within their personnel, there's a line, and it's an object code 6099, says step and grade contingency. So it's within their personnel budget, and they don't have access to spend from it, but if the board obviously approves the step and grade, then we move it up to their salaries and make those adjustments. The county manager's budget is still, has the 30,000 contingency, and she has the ability to move that to her operating expenses as needed. And same thing with the BOC contingency, except for that requires board action for you to appropriate that, because obviously, a lot of times, you don't spend that on BOC needs, it's on department requests. So those do require agenda items, and the same thing as we will address any other contingency as we move forward, because they didn't like the fact, I said, the board didn't like the fact that we had a, so much money in general fund admin, but it was, we had to really drill down and had a specific slide that said contingency slide, this is what they're for, contingency slide, this is what they're for. So Commissioner, if you look at the presentation from last year and you go to that contingency slide for general fund admin, you'll see it's significantly less, but that's why. We moved them to the individual departments per the board's request. It's kind of, it's really a preference. We kind of liked having them all together because it's in one spot, but we understood that, like, for example, PD's, step and grade, sheriff's step and grade, it really belongs with PD and sheriff. So it's, it was just a board's preference is really all it was.
I remember faintly some interest in ensuring that the funds set aside for that step and grade would remain.
Yes.
And that was one way of identifying those funds, was moving it in that manner.
Yes. And, and for us, it makes sense as well, because then we can say, this is part of their personnel, even though they may, you know, obviously, when we go forward to step and grade, it'll just be moved up to salaries, but it's within that personnel line when you see it. So it's not, it makes it a little bit easier for us as well. And them for planning.
I think the impact of that, though, is contingency doesn't permit flexibility I, I think the impact of that though is contingency doesn't permit flexibility for those things that can come up during the year, which
Yes.
aren't typically candidates for contingency.
Correct. And the, the, the big one with that, that's kind of our catch-all, is the BOC contingency for $1 million. That gives you the greatest flexibility, although it does require an agenda item every time you use it. That is your, kind of your catch-all that can be addressed for emergency needs. And then of course, the board always has the ability to appropriate fund balance at any given time through the agenda process.
Yes, Commissioner?
I was actually going to ask a question related to that point about how those contingency funds were assigned to different departments. How was that process administered? Was there input from the board, from the board?
Yes.
In terms of, or was it just based on historical precedent?
No, it, it is, is very much driven by the adoption process itself, which obviously the board is very much involved in. So for example, the Step and Grade had to be a priority identified in the FY21 budget process. Those costs were shared with the board and once those were identified as a priority and wished to be funded, those contingencies were put into the specific places and identified to say, all right, this is exactly how much is in there for police for Step and Grade. This is exactly how much is in there for Sheriff's Step and Grade. So that way we have those funds available. So when that is approved, you'll see this is what was budgeted, this is the estimated cost. And it was even identified that that would take place in March, which was a unique situation for us, because typically in the previous year, we did an October implementation for both merit. So it's a little bit different and we always have to specify that for the board. So like if we do a merit and we haven't done a merit since we made that recommendation to put them in the individual departments, that will be a unique challenge for us. Because now you're taking, right now I'm having to take Step and Grade and really put it in three places. If I do merit, you're doing it for every department, which is fine. And we will happily do that, but that makes it assigned to those departments.
And just piggybacking off of that, is it formulaic for each department? Do you say, you know, it's this percentage of funds will be set aside because this department's budget is X, therefore their contingency budget will be 10% of what?
Sure.
X is?
It, it depends on what it's for. So really the only contingencies that we have that are like that right now is Step and Grade. And that's calculated based on the employee roster at the time. So that's how we do it. We work very closely with HR. They print, provide the roster, they calculate the exact cost based on employees on the roster at the time of budget adoption and that's how it's calculated. We don't do a generic cross-the-board of, you get 5% of your budget in contingency. We don't have anything like that. No other departments have contingency unless there are specific priorities that the board has identified, with the exception of the BOC contingency and the County Manager. And those, those dollar amounts are not based on percentage of the budget. Those have been locked in for years, which is something that could be addressed as we move forward. Yes?
It's the BOC contingency that I'm not sure I'm clear on.
Sure.
So I understand for Step and Grade, that's pre-allocated. That is a priority that's listed and we want to make sure that if we pass it, those funds are actually there.
Right.
The BOC contingency though seems a little bit indiscriminate. And if we've retracted that back into individual allocations for departments.
Sure.
I'm trying to understand how we did those assignments.
Sure.
And maybe they haven't been done. I'm just, I'm not clear.
Okay. No, that's, that's a great question. So the BOC contingency is a flat $1 million every year and that is parked within the BOC's discretion. It's not allocated to the individual departments. The only way that is done is when their department or the board of commissioners brings in an agenda item forward to appropriate it to, like let's say, let's say for example, Finance had a request for $50,000 and we brought an agenda item, said we'd like to use $50,000 of the BOC contingency for X. If that's approved, then that 50, that your $1 million will be reduced by 50,000 and it'll be moved to Finance. But the only way that can happen is if the board approves it. We do not do that at budget allocation time, because what we do is that's kind of your, that's kind of one of your lifelines that you have for unforeseen circumstances. Now obviously you have the fund balance available to you at any given time and we do have a healthy fund balance, but this is some kind of hit first. And typically we don't spend much of this. I mean, this is one of the items, I mean, I'd say it's, it's probably nothing to have, you know, $700,000 left in that at the end of the year. But that gives you that flexibility for unforeseen circumstances. I mean, for example, big storm comes through, you have extra DOT requirements, public safety requirements, what have you, that's an option for you. But so is fund balance. So you have different options and that's really what it's for, is to give you options. But either option that you choose will require an agenda item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Burrell?
With respect to this position.
Yes.
I'd kind of like to have more information. And does it report to the County Manager, HR?
Sure.
Cost for salary?
Sure.
And will it just be for our hiring practices or pub, you know, diversity and inclusion officer with police or, I mean, I'm.
And, and I think.
I need some more information before I can say, and, you know, without having the tax digest.
Sure.
And all these other priorities, I, I don't know how we're going to fund all the stuff we're going to fund.
Absolutely.
We've been requested to fund them.
And, and that is a great question. So what we committed to you today is that for anything that you want additional information on, because like I said, a lot of the priorities can be done 30 to 100 different ways and they're all going to come with different costs. So if there's anything that we want, including staffing levels, like I told you, you had 84 positions. I didn't give you the detail of what those positions are or the justifications. But if that is something you want as we move forward, that is something we're working on building and putting together for you. I've already costed, well, HR has already costed those out for us. So we're just making sure we have all the justification. So if that is a priority, can literally hand you the priorities or the, the positions with the justification and costing and say, these are the ones that are being submitted. And by the way, these are the ones that are supported by their own revenues versus unsupported by the revenues, which is a unique distinction. I mean, ComDev is a perfect example. If the board is wanting to adjust the fee structure, then they pay for themselves. Not all positions and not all departments have that unique flexibility. But for the same thing for this, we can give you a write-up and the costing for this and that's fine. We're happy to share that with you. This was just more of a high level, this was a priority that we were discussing. But obviously that would be a conversation that we can work with the County Manager's Office and HR to provide you that information. Okay? Great.
Commissioner Sheffield, did you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, keep going. Okay.
I'm sorry, before that.
Yep.
County Manager, did you want to add to the, okay, you're good, okay.
Can we have these slides?
Absolutely. I will give you, I'll send these to you immediately after the meeting, but I want you to have the hard copy of the financial report, because that's again where a lot of this base data comes from for the financial status update. So yes, absolutely, we're going to, and we'll even post this on the website as well, so it's available to the public. Okay. So this is kind of our decision tree, our timeline that we have here right now. So high-level priorities, this is something we really need from the board today, mostly on the budget process. Is the board comfortable with the copy paste of the FY21 budget into FY22 as the baseline? And then we see where the revenues go based on the digest update that we get from the tax assessors this spring? And then really, what are your priorities from the revenue standpoint? If, if we're locked in on those, that really helps us build what your delta is. Either whether it's a positive number or it's a negative number, we can build that after we get the tax digest from Stephen White. And then what we'd like to do is provide you a draft, high-level summary budget after we get that tax digest. So we're seeing basically today, high-level priorities is what we're really looking for and a yes on the budget process or no, we'd like to do X. That's really what we want today, March and April. We'll get that update from Stephen White and his team, update the revenue projections and that'll give us basically six months of the year for FY21 data to use as we project into FY22. So keep in mind, we won't have the digest until June. And we're, we're projecting what FY22 will look like for next June. So over a year and a half out is really what we're projecting out. So we always will make a very conservative estimate, working very closely with the Tax Assessor's office. But what we'd then like to do is provide a high-level budget to you, discuss with the BOC options, including the priorities and how to best possibly fund those priorities as we walk through those in April and May. And then we'll run a final personnel numbers and get updates from pension and healthcare, payroll rosters, the whole nine in, in May. And then we'll have a very detailed discussion of kind of finalizing that delta number. And what we like to do with that is the, early in April and May, give you that high level, this is what we believe the delta number is, and then we'll adjust it based on that final payroll roster as we get close. We don't want to take that too soon. We definitely don't want to take it today, because if Step and, as Step and Grade goes forward, it'll be very different after that is implemented than it is today. So that's why we do that. We try to hold off until May to really run those numbers. And then we would like to meet with each, with the, with the chair, the county manager and the commissioners, discuss kind of how we fit your priorities, the priorities of staff into that budget and work through that process in May and June. And then obviously we adopt the FY21 millage in July and the FY22 budget in July, the last meeting. So one of the other key factors that's in here is at the beginning of July, we have to advertise the FY21 millage and the MDJ. Once that is advertised, the board cannot go above that amount. We can go less, you cannot go higher. So that's why we really want to build that consensus in May to, in May and late June at the, well, preferably not late June, but May and June, to have that clear direction of what we're comfortable with, where we're moving forward. So really there shouldn't be much change in the budget process unless we hear from the public or the board has additional priorities or there's some shift on those priorities in June for when we bring the adoption forward in July. So I guess what I'm asking today again is how, how, how comfortable are we with copy paste FY21 as the baseline, adjust for the priorities as the budget process versus opening it back up? Because what I believe I heard from the board for '23 is you'd like that full, open process. Let's really hear what the needs are, possibly including a five-year plan, but really detailed version of what that looks like. And hopefully by that time, you're coming out of the pandemic. And the other reason we were looking at that is because if we're really looking to open that up for FY23, you're going to adopt '22 in July. That budget process starts in September. So you're right around, departments are going to start putting those requests together. So is that, is that what I'm hearing? Is that pretty good?
Thank you, Bill. You know.
Sorry.
You had a slide that had the summary.
I'm sorry?
You had a slide, if you toggle back, that says summary.
Yes, ma'am.
That captures what you're asking of us, which is to build, if we want to build from the existing budget.
Yes, this one here.
Which is typically done in a biennial year.
Yes.
I think what makes this year unique is the session that we had at our retreat where the agencies had an opportunity to let us know what all their needs were across the board. I can't remember a session where we've had that comprehensive a discussion about needs across the entire organization. And so the, you know, we have a lot of things which we can consider now that we did not know in the past, but there's still a lot of unknown because of the pandemic that we're in and we don't have the digest numbers. So while we may be sensitive to a lot of the new things that have been brought to us, I can speak personally and I, I, you know, really am open to hearing what commissioners have to say, but just from my personal vantage point, it's difficult to think of all the possibilities when we're dealing with so much unknown about what the digest is. So I think once we get that number in late March or early April, it will allow me to comfortably build.
Sure.
But, you know, as I reflected on the retreat and my conversation with you and the County Manager, I will speak personally, this is, you know, the budget adoption process is, the chairman or chairwoman proposes the budget, but it's adopted by a majority of the board. But I can let you know, for me, one of the most pressing needs that I see as an organization is the retention and recruitment of employees, because that is correlated to our ability to provide services to the public. And I was shocked, a little, even disheartened, when I saw the level of turnover amongst our employees in light of the fact that we will have a number of employees retiring or are eligible to retire within a short timeframe. So to me, looking at merit is a serious consideration for me. As we move even into 2022, that's something I would like for this board to consider, even if more modest than what we would like, because I think it's important for us to send a strong signal to the organization about the valuing the, the human assets of this organization to, to provide services out to the public. There's something that you shared though, that's even a, a priority of the board. Before even weigh what was shared at the retreat is that healthcare and the pension are immediate priorities. And I, I want to emphasize to the board that off the bat, we need $5 million every year to keep up with the increasing costs of healthcare and to make sure that our pension is being funded responsibly. So we are dependent on that five, at least a $5 million increase to not have to do something to change our, our current budget. So that's something that is also of mine, that we need to continue that. Outside of investing in people, I think something that we've had a challenge with over the years, which we deal with and has really impacted the level of our ability to weigh the public's options or vertical development in our splosh is how we invest or have not invested in capital maintenance. So to me, it doesn't make sense for us not to have a regular dollar amount in every budget that goes towards capital maintenance when we have capital. So again, I don't know what that looks like based on the numbers.
Sure.
But for me, I can say that's a priority. You know, everything is good until it's bad, so to speak. You know, you, you think you're trending right and then when you, something comes up and everybody says, why didn't you do something? And I, I think that's a case in point when we look at what's happening in Texas, but even with the cybersecurity issues. It's not a sexy issue to talk about, but every time a cybersecurity issue comes up for any organization, whether it be a public or private organization, that organization seems to have egg on its face. And you, you know, working where, where you work, I'm sure you know that firsthand. So as, as much as it's easy to overlook that, that's something I think that we should seriously consider moving into 2022. I think some of the public's safety requests are things that we need to strongly consider as well. I know that we'll look at revenue above production and we'll get into each agency, but there are some serious considerations brought up with our sheriff's office, also considerations of real-time call center, the fire has need E911. And I feel like whatever 911 asks for, they should get, because that's the last thing I want to mess with. And if they need generators, that seems like something that we should consider. So as you start talking about what seems like a real need, it's just that price tag grows. I think the exigence of the time with all that's happened with social justice and race matters and policing matters, the consideration of a diversity and inclusion officer isn't, is important, because again, everything is good until it's bad and then you realize there are gaps in how we do things. So that's something that I would like to take a look at, just because it came up last year. And if it's before us again this year, I just, as Commissioner Burrell said, you know, seeing the numbers, knowing what the impact is something I think the entire board needs to see and, and understand how that would be considered. These are just some initial considerations of mine, not taking anything away from anything else that any other agency has, has brought before us. But again, high-level, we know healthcare, pension, and then if I were to choose a next, I think we have to look at our, our, our employees and our human assets here to ensure that we can continue to provide quality service throughout the time. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on this. Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Sure, why not? I'll chime in. I think on my part, there was definitely a concurrence of opinion on the items that you outlined. The biggest thing that we have before us is the how, how we get there and the considerations in terms of, you know, is it, is it a cutback? Is it finding new revenue? Is it something creative, as you mentioned? You had the long list of items with no dollar signs, because there are a million ways to get to those items. And so that's really where I'm focused on from a budget processing standpoint is the how we get there, unless so the priorities, because what we've outlined are really, from what I perceive and for a lot of the community, because I've begun to have these conversations with members of the community, this is baseline.
Yep.
We're talking about basic services, basic administration for the, for the county that we have. It is a blessing, the, the amenities that we have available to us, the staff that we have, but we know that we are outpacing, that the demand is outpacing our ability to meet that demand. And that is, to, to, to just harp on a point that you brought up, retention and recruiting are very important to that. You can't make that happen. And a lot of the issues that we wind up discussing can be traced back to the fact that there, the capacity's not there to meet that demand. So you wind up with maybe a cut corner here or a lapse of excellence there or just a delay. And that costs a lot of money, not to mention the liabilities associated with not having those capital investments. Those would be the two that I would say are probably paramount. It's a liability. When you're not able to invest in your infrastructure, there is a, there is a reckoning at the end of that. So, you know, as far as my conversations with the So, you know, as far as my conversations with the community, it's really about being very sincere and authentic about what we're facing so that we can have those conversations. Doesn't mean that there is one way to solve it. It just means this is the situation that we're in. How do we get there? How do we get to where we want to be? And what, what is that place that we want to be in? So, you know, not to get too much on a soapbox, but the two things I, I really wanted to focus on were the, the retention and recruitment, which we know that there were a long list of items that we can consider as tools for the toolkit. Some of them have no cost, some of them have costs. And then the other side are the capital investments, making sure that we are supporting that because when you kind of hear the adage about kicking the can down the road, that is exactly what that is.
Yep.
And you get to a point where you can't kick that can too much further, can you? So, you know, we have the responsibility, being stewards of all of everyone's hard work and earnings, to make sure that we are accommodating all of our different constituents, that we're serving everyone adequately and with equity. So that would be my commentary for this budget and I'm looking forward to a very wholehearted pursuit of a, a bunch of different options by which we can solve some of these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell?
The tax digest is scheduled to come in the end of March, first of April?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I thought you said June somewhere in there.
The, the final digest will be available in June. What you're going to get at the end of March and April, the tax assessor always provides his projections based on the assessments that they've seen. So obviously there's an appeal process and they have to go through the finalization of the digest itself. So working with Steve and his office, I, I won't say always, but always, you get a good number from Steve at the end of March and it usually improves between then and the time you get to June. So if we take his projection based on the assessments he's seen, that's a good place to be. So we always look at that. And, and again, remember, that's the growth or the, the digest for 21. So we're also looking at that as a, hey, we did zero for 21, so if it comes in at 2%, that's 2% that we didn't budget for in, in 21. And then we can also add that 2% into 22 because we don't anticipate it going to a negative, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we have to be conservative because with the pandemic.
Absolutely.
We'll be lucky to remain flat.
Yeah. And, and we've had initial conversations with the tax assessor's office. They do anticipate a positive number. They don't believe it will be zero. They, they didn't, they're not going to go out and say it's going to be 5% because it's not going to be.
Yeah.
But it, it, they do anticipate a positive number. So any positive number is a, is a win for us because we budgeted zero.
Okay.
And we hadn't done that since the recession.
And then the revenue above projections or SPOLOST items.
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm hoping that that will cover those and we won't have to borrow from the general fund because I, we can't go there.
So, and I know Jimmy's going to-
We have to keep those separate.
Yep.
But, um, and I would just recommend doing the, the current budget.
Perfect.
Because that's a start.
Yes.
We're not knowing what the digest is going to bring. And start from there. And my priorities would be the things like stepping grade that are already budgeted for and have to be sustainable year after year to make it work.
Sure.
Um, and we have to do the pension and the healthcare. So that would, and of course, anything we can do to reduce that water transfer would, and stepping grade would be my priorities.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Sheffield?
This is always a difficult topic and conversation to deal with, but we all agree that we have far more expense than we do income. So this puts us in a very, very difficult situation. And as Commissioner Richardson mentioned, we are kicking the can down the road, but that road is a dead-end street now and we just cannot kick it any further. As it relates to the priorities, I am of the opinion to fulfill and satisfy whatever promises we have already made, particularly as it relates to the stepping grade. Our retention, employee retention remains top of list for me and I echo the cheer sentiment and our employees help us to better serve our constituents. And the retention is extremely important to me. Infrastructure is also important to me. And we do not have a line item for capital improvements, so therefore we need to make sure that we have funds to, you know, to, to repair our infrastructure. As it relates to the diversity officer, I would be, I, I would like to know if that includes vetting vendors or if it's just for a county employee. So I, I would like to know more information about that. And also you mentioned that this came up a couple of years ago, so did you guys not discuss a potential budget then? And if so, what did you guys come up with?
So yes, we've discussed it for a couple of years. And as Bill mentioned, it was in and out of the budget. So it was in and then out, but what we found, or the chair at the time found, was that it wasn't enough support, three votes, to move forward with putting it in a line item within the budget. But it was a priority. So what the chair said at the time was, we can always fund it out of the BOC contingency and then roll it into the, the regular budget process the following year. So the intent would be if we were to do it this time, you would fund it the first year out of undesigned contingency or board contingency. And then in 23, you would put it as a line item in, in the budget to include operating and any capital. To go back to the initial part of the question, who would the person report to, what would be the duties, what is the relationship? So I will get you a job description of a DE and I position. I will get that to you with a range in, of the salary. One of the things that I had envisioned with this role is that we have not done the best job at looking at a lot of things across the county as it relates to, to DBE, as it relates to making sure that our, our policies are looked at through a different lens to include inclusion, the way in which we write job descriptions. So this person will be looking internally at, across all departments to see if and how we can do things better and with a different, more objective lens. The person would report to the county manager's office. They would also work with the community. They would work with the community in ways to ensure that when we put positions out there, people within Cobb, people around the, the nation can look at that and see that it is a priority for us. We would look at ways in which we can do things better within those departments. So for example, I'll just use procurement as an example, since we talked about, you mentioned vendors. So the person would come in and do an assessment of perhaps the number of vendors that we have awarded contracts over the last, say, five years. How many of those contracts have been written or vetted in such a way that it does show that they're inclusive, that they are inviting for minority businesses to include women, to include other groups who may feel disenfranchised by the process? When we talk about working with the communities, if there were events, for example, in which we partner, i.e. the county in partnership with the MLK event with the NAACP, I would, would hope that the diversity, equity and inclusion officer would be a part of how that event looks, how, how, how it's shaped to include things that the county may want to include in that program. So from a broad perspective, the DE and I persons that I'm aware of through organizations, whether it's Cobb, BMC or other corporate organizations, they work in the communities. They provide speakers within that agency to come to, to other businesses and help with training, to help with workshops and looking at things across a broad spectrum of diversity and inclusion. So I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner, or not, but yeah.
Commissioner Sheffield, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Garenbrough, did you want to add anything to the discussion?
While I agree retention and recruitment is a high priority, tying in with the diversity inclusion officer, I'm having a hard time because we have a human resources department that should have been doing this all along. But more so the fact that we've got 84 open positions. And those 84 open positions aren't something new. Those 84 positions have been here for 10 years or more. In our public safety, we've had 70 to 100 and some open, open position for 10 or more years. Same thing with fire and I'm sure the same thing with sheriff's office. So I'm having a little hard time when we're sitting here saying we want to prioritize for a new position when we internally haven't addressed this issue for 10 years. I don't think hiring a new position to fix this problem is the right way to go. We've got the resources here to do that. We just need to sit down and do it. As far as capital maintenance, all the department has known that, that has been a big priority to me, especially since the 2022 SPOLOST essentially took out our capital maintenance abilities for our assets within our counties, whether it be our parks or senior services or our libraries. So capital maintenance would be as such. And that's all I have to say.
Chairwoman Cubid, I just want to make one clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
So if I didn't misspeak, I want to clarify that. I didn't in any way mean to articulate that a DE and I position was going to fix problems with vacancies in positions. That is not the, the purpose of a DE and I position. So I just want to make that very clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other things to add? Bill, thank you for your time today and for walking us through this. This is our first public discussion of the budget. There may be other considerations that come up from our staff or even from commissioners. I would just say because of the timeline presented, if there's anything else to be considered, please help communicate that to everyone. I'll, will take time and also talk with each commissioner as we move through this process. My goal is to be as open with everyone as possible to consider all of that and to ensure we have time for the public to, to fully digest these considerations. So the more meetings like this we have, the better because the public has access to your work sessions.
Chairwoman Cubid, if I could just add a couple of things. Thank you for your time today, first and foremost. Thank you for the direction and we really appreciate it. As we walk through this, as especially we get closer to adoption, we will have two presentations and a public hearing on the budget that'll be, you know, within the month of July. So we'll have those opportunities and if the board requires any additional support from finance, whether it be work session or what have you, we're always happy to accommodate. We do want to make sure that this is a very transparent and open process. So we just look for feedback and we will make any accommodations that we possibly can.
Before you go, there is something I thought of. You know, Commissioner Richardson talked about recognizing the priorities as being there, but making sure we're considering the creativity of the resources that are there.
Yes.
That is probably one thing I would ask to be fleshed out a bit more. There was one slide where you had different options.
Yes.
How we can cover this. If we can have dollar amounts associated with those so we can know what we're working with to be able to respond accordingly, that'd be helpful.
And Chairwoman, that's exactly what we'll do as soon as we have the digest update from the tax assessor's office.
Okay.
We're going to, based on the direction and priorities we heard today at a high level, we're going to bring you those menu options and like, let's say merit, for example, we're going to provide you, this is what it would look like in this scenario and probably six other ones to kind of give you cost and ability to make those adjustments. Because our goal is to make your priorities fit into the budget. Now, it may not be what we all initially think, but we may be able to find a compromise to fit that priority when there's some fashion. It may not be, like you said, it may not be a 3% merit, it may be a 1% merit, it may be an October merit, it may be a March merit. So again, all those have different options and we will present and walk through every option with you that we have and look for feedback. Because if there's anything that you see that we're maybe leaving off the table, and one of the things is a perfect example that came out of the retreat, is there was discussion about increasing the, the match for the DC plan. That was not something that was necessarily heard, but that was feedback we received, so we'll incorporate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Something else that, I mean, there's so much to add. I want to let you go, but it's so hard to let you go and we're talking about the money.
It's okay.
Yes, before I say anything, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Garenbrough.
So I love get creative with the money, right? Where are we going to find the money? So I know last year, when we initiated, initiated the conversation with step and pay.
Yes.
For our public safety officers, you were going to use funds that you had found with the TAVT tax. How is our TAVT tax going? Because that's essentially where we find money to do some of our creative things in government. And, and I know, Bill, I took issue with this because when we approved the stepping grade, which I still support. We then found out that there was legislation that changed the allocation of our TAVT tax.
Yes.
Which was going to impact how we fund it in the future. So how is our TAVT tax looking in order to be able to potentially fund things such as the stepping grade?
I, I'm happy to report that is one of the shining bits of good news that we have is that when the state made the change that impacted our TAVT tax, it was all about where the dealerships were located. And within Cobb County, most of our dealerships are located in unincorporated Cobb. So it actually came to be a big benefit to the county is the way they changed the, the law, the code to, to impact us. So what we've seen is despite the pandemic, people are still buying cars left and right, which I don't understand, but it's, it's one of those unique things that we see in pandemics. Some things are heavily impacted, some things are not. I would have guessed going into this is that you'd see a slowdown. It's still coming in every bit as strong as it did in FY2020. So that, FY20 was our first big year of what that was going to look like with the state law change. We had a little, like a half a year in 19, the 20 was a full year and it has remained consistent every month. And we, that is probably one of our, our best performing revenues at this point.
Yes, go ahead.
So is our legislature looking at changing that again? Or do we know anything on the, on the horizon? Or do we need to pass that off to Jimmy Gacy to kind of see if there's any feelers out there that they're going to change this again in the future? If it's been a negative impact to the city since the way it was originally written, it was supposed to be a positive impact to them?
And I can let Jimmy answer that in a minute, but also one of the things that we did is because of that uncertainty, we'd never budget 100% of that. For example, we did increase the budget to fund stepping grade and that was part of the agenda, Adam, as you stated. The, the revenue projections are still coming in above what we budgeted quite significantly and that is something that we will definitely watch every legislative session as we move forward. I mean, there for years, it was untouched and didn't change. And then for like, it was like every couple of years, it would change a little bit. So this was the, by far, the biggest change that we've seen. And it really put us back to where we were before all the other changes took place. So, I mean, it's kind of come full circle is that we were, first change, we were positively impacted, then we're negative impacted, then negative impacted again. And then this one came out and really put us back to where we were at the beginning of the whole cycle. So it's, it's, it's structured a little bit differently, but this has been a strong source. But I'm sure if, as we see anything from the legislation that is a consideration, this is definitely something that's been assigned out that we want to make comments on to say, hey, Cobb really likes the way this is done. And I'm sure you're going to have other municipalities that may feel, you know, for or against it, but depending on how they're impacted. And that's kind of the, the natural cycle of this is as each change, you kind of hear from, find an area that is positively impacted and one area that's negatively impacted. And obviously there'll be discussions along the way to see what support is generated and if there's a change that comes out of it.
I mean, that's a good point that's being brought up is how our budget could be impacted by legislative decisions. I even look at all of the bills surrounding elections and how that could end up impacting our operations here. Even something that, you know, I'm having some consternation about is that talks about minimum wage and paying people $15 an hour. And I think we have a number of employees in this county who work full-time, who are making 11, $12 an hour. It's just, this feels unacceptable to me because when we talk about some of the programs like evictions, we're talking about helping our own people here in Cobb County and that bothers me tremendously. And just to talk about, you know, the regular impact of that plus compression on top of that, you know, that's a big ticket item. So I appreciate Commissioner Garenbrough talking about legislation because it's one thing for us to be mindful of what's going on in our house, but what goes on in the other two houses, statewide and federal, can have serious impact on our budget here in the county. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? I'm gonna let you go, Bill. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Our next presentation, I think we'll keep Bill up there, um, at the hot mic, and we'll also add Jimmy Geese to the discussion as we have our presentation of the 2016 SPOS revenue over projection list.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and Commissioners. If I might provide a tad of a preamble, um, I don't think you'll have to worry about me talking as fast as Mr. Volkmann does, so you can relax a little bit and, and hear it. And whenever Bill asks me, he says, do you want me to go first, or do you want to go first with the, with the revenue above projections? I said, oh, you go first, I said, because yours will be easy and mine will be, mine will be, you know, pretty in-depth. It's a very good human trait when you admit that you have made an error in judgment. I believe I should have gone first, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Commissioners, this is a living, breathing document. You saw, uh, the first rendition, uh, down at your retreat. Very, very little has changed, however, a few things have, and it can change a hundred percent after we receive final input, uh, from, from you as the board members. These projections are done as, in the Cobb County way, in that the amount that we're doling out as revenue above projections is done at a very conservative rate. Currently, uh, we're generating an average of about thirteen and a half million dollars a month. These projections were done based on twelve and a half million dollars a month, and we've even had some months around the Christmas season that were even much, much better than that, uh, based on the, the season. However, Mr. Volkmann always is, is quick to reel you back in, saying we're entering the, entering the dark days of spring, so, uh, that can also come back down a little bit. We understand that there's no votes taken in work session, however, we've got a lot of staff's gonna watch for head nods today, and both positive and negative, to kind of give us an idea of, uh, things we need to look at. The format, we're gonna kind of go through each agency, uh, some of the simpler ones, Bill and I will tackle. Uh, but however, for instance, like with DOT, maybe with the sheriff, some of the others, we may ask their staff to come up and help us with that, because they know their shops much better than we do. So, any questions before we get started? Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are you gonna give a description of these?
Yes, ma'am. You have, you have two things. Uh, you have the actual presentation in front of you, and you should also have the big spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Which, which goes into a little bit more detail. Um, we'll be glad to talk about each one of them. Uh, if I, if I'm getting too deep into the weeds, please just say, speed it up, and we'll move on. Uh, as far as parks, I've, I've got a little bit of knowledge about that, uh, so I can, can, uh, help you out with those. Uh, Discovery Boulevard, uh, this is the, uh, park, have I done forgot the name of it? River, Riverline, Discovery Park at the Riverline.
Thank you.
You, I don't know why I would have got confused on that one, uh, but we do have it. Uh, one of the conditions in the original nineteen ninety deed is that we fence any property that is contiguous, uh, to another, uh, property owner. Uh, so that is that amount, the seventy-three thousand five hundred. Stout Park, one of the, uh, elements of that, uh, phase one construction is the bridge over Sweetwater Creek. However, with the latest FEMA, uh, floodplain maps, uh, the, the floodplain has gotten wider, so we're gonna have to, to make that bridge much wider. Old Clarkdale Park, that's the one down in the village. Um, uh, that's the one where the, the actual community center burned a few years ago. Uh, this is needed to, to get that park underway. The Osburn Area Recreation Center, uh, to go in the, in the Osburn High School, uh, area, uh, one of the things that we're gonna need to do is actually purchase the land, so we need additional funds for that. And then Nesbit Union Chapel is right there on, uh, Powder Springs Road. If you're going south, right before you get to County Services Parkway, it's on the left, right there beside that trailer shop. Uh, and it's, it, it is, it is a county park. There's a, uh, remains of an old chapel that many, many people got married in back in the day. It was a very, very famous, uh, wedding location. Uh, and as you can tell, with this amount of money, we're not looking to go in and ghost frame it. It's basically to put up some, uh, interpretive signage, uh, maybe some small ghost framing on the front of it, so you can see what it looked like. Um, so that, that's where that project is. Totalling, yes, ma'am?
Commissioner Burrow, if you don't mind, can you turn on your mic, so your questions can be heard? Thank you.
Always forget to do that. There's also an additional two million in the twenty twenty SPOS.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean twenty twenty-two SPOS.
Twenty twenty-two SPOS, yes, ma'am.
For the Osburn Rec Center.
That was one of the, uh, community impact projects that then Commissioner Cupid selected.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So that totals up for Parks, four million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. If there's any deep questions, Mr. Brantley's here, and I believe Mr. Tanks is here as well, uh, that can answer any questions on that.
Sorry, I have a question regarding Stout, Stout Park and the bridge. Do we know how much wider the bridge needs to be?
We're still designing it, Commissioner.
Come on up.
I know, we're, we're talking amongst each other, but we just want to make sure that those who are watching, you know, social media.
Commissioner, we're still, we're still in the design. We're about sixty percent right now. We know that it is gonna have to be wider simply because the floodplain, uh, floodplain map changed, uh, but we're still designing that right now, because we had to move the abutments back so far, so we're still getting that down, but we're, we're hoping that the extra four hundred will take care of it. We had to, we had to go considerably wider due to the floodplain.
And, and this will actually connect the, the southern part of Stout Park to the new Wallace property that we purchased with the oh-eight bond program. Yes, ma'am?
I just have one other comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, since these are all in District Four, I have a reminder.
Microphone, please. Microphone, please. Since these are all in District Four.
Well, not all of them.
What isn't?
The last one.
Nesbit Union Chapel.
That's District Four, isn't it?
District One.
Is that District One on the line?
Yes, District One.
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't even know where, what it was or where it was. Um, I think you need to look at the mulch at the dog park, Sweat Mountain Dog Park, to see what we can do there.
In the spirit.
In the spirit of inclusivity.
Yes, yes, ma'am, we'll do whatever we can to take care of that issue.
And I can't believe Hyde Farm isn't on here. So.
It's, it's, it was a discussion.
We're still, we're still.
We're still trying to figure it out.
Right now, yes.
Which is interesting, but, you know, serious point, that if there are things that you don't see on here, you know, that you would like to see on here, that's what part of this discussion is about. Commissioner Garmbrill, you had a question?
Okay, you opened the door, so I'm coming in. So I know we haven't gotten there, but we have several projects on this list that were not included in the twenty sixteen SPOS, that could go back and finish a lot of master plans that were in the twenty sixteen SPOS that were not finished. We've got over seventy, it's seventy-four passive parks that we have master plans for, Michael?
I don't know the exact number, but we've got a lot.
Okay, I know we got total ninety, but I think seventy-four of them are passive parks. We've got.
Seventy-four of the ninety?
Are passive?
No, there's, there's considerably less of that.
Okay. Let me back up.
Sure.
Okay, we've got a bunch of passive parks that the board has, over the years, approved master plans for, but we have not finished them. Hyde Farms was just brought up. I know we've got Green Meadows Resort, but my favorite one, I'm gonna pick on you now, is Stout. Stout Farm was promised to be completed up and running ten, twelve years ago?
It's been a while.
And it's not even open to the public. So while we're, we're looking at this, we are also looking at funding projects that weren't on the twenty sixteen SPOS list, so why aren't we putting that money to go to parks where it's been promised to the people that these parks would be up and running? And here, twelve years later, we're still not there. Kick the can down the road, right? Here we are. Um, also, just, um, for the new members of the board, was it in nineteen you made a presentation to the board that if we just funded projects, it was gonna be over three hundred and ten million dollars? Just for some perspective for you. So I'm struggling with some of these allocations, knowing that, you know, this is our one opportunity, the twenty twenty-two SPOS. We don't have District Four because of the way the, um, community allocations were, it was left a little bit more open. I funded a couple of mine, but we don't have funding going to parks to continue to expand on master plans that were approved many, many years ago. Um, so the big question, when is Stout going to be open, especially to the equestrian community? Because again, that was promised to them twelve years ago when you were gonna close down Wild Horse. Now, I know Wild Horse isn't completely closed down, but from an equestrian use perspective, it's not really feasible.
So like I said, we're about sixty percent, seventy percent of the design right now. Um, and once we get through the design phase, hopefully in the next three to four months, we'll go out to bid for that, and that will be the phase one of Stout Park. Stout Park, overall plan, we're thinking is gonna be about thirteen to fourteen million, so this is about two million of that first. We've already started with some trails on the Stout Park, um, and our staff is continuing to build those trails at Stout Park right now. So hopefully, once we build the first phase, which will include parking lot, equestrian ring, um, a bathroom, some, some parking, um, we'll have some trails with the bridge getting us to the second part of the, the, the property, the Wallace property. That'll give us a lot more, um, trail riding, um, length, um, so we're hoping to get about seven or eight miles, hopefully within the next year to two.
That phase, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Stout Farm and Stout Park.
Mike, Mike.
Stout Park is all, it's all one, yeah, three, about three hundred acres.
When the phase one begins, would the park be open at that time? Okay. And Commissioner Garmbrill does bring up a point that there are some projects here that, um, could be more robustly funded to get them where we want them to be, but because there's so many considerations, they may not have all the funding to do so. And there are some other considerations, particularly that are in those general bucket areas, where you don't need a specific project, that have cropped up on this list. And so this is what this meeting is for, to determine that, um, you know, I could beat, we could truly, pun intended, beat a dead horse about this, but, um, you know, even for sidewalks, just to get to our master plan for sidewalks is a seven hundred and fifty million dollar initiative across the county, and that's one, one, um, side of the road sidewalks for many of our major roads. So we, we, as Commissioner Sheffield shared, the requests are often like this, and the resources we have are like this, but, I mean, this should be a true consideration if we should be shifting funds, because there's something else that needs to be done. Um, hopefully, we can keep that in mind, particularly when we go through all of the projects, we can, um, feel free to have open discussion about that. Okay, thank you, thank you, Michael.
Yeah, and Commissioners, with, in the twenty twenty-two SPOS, uh, out of the properties that we purchased with the oh-eight bond program, Commissioner Burrow included funding for her, her park, and Commissioner Garmbrill included, like, phase one funding for a couple of hers. And then there's Commissioner, uh, then Commissioner Cupid, uh, assigned some money that will at least allow access to the properties, uh, in those, so, um, but there is a lot of, a lot of, uh, room to go on those. Okay.
I, I have another question regarding Old Clarkdale.
Yes, ma'am.
Does any of that fall within the city limits of Osteau? Or close to it?
I was about to say yes.
Does it matter? Does it count?
I'm just.
I'm not sure the final answer. I'm pretty sure it is not inside the city of Osteau. I think it's right on the edge.
Okay, I was just wondering if any land surrounding it.
I, I wanna say that the threadmill, the, the road, I think that is the, the boundary, but don't, don't quote me on that. I'll find that out and let you know.
I, I was just thinking in terms of some type of partnership or.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, the second, uh, item on the revenue above projection sheet is the medical examiner's office. Uh, in the sixteen SPOS program, uh, three million dollars was included, uh, to construct a large medical examiner facility. Obviously, that was not enough, uh, so we're looking to reimburse the general fund, that eight million dollars.
Yes.
Okay?
We'll take.
Any questions on that one?
Yes. No?
I know we can't vote. We're.
Yes.
I see some nods, though, so that's so good. Okay, uh, DOT, I, before we even get started, I'm gonna call upon Eric and, and/or Drew to, whoever's gonna do this, to come on up and let them run through their list with you.
Yeah, please. Good afternoon, Chairwoman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We have a pretty extensive list for your consideration, um, and we've, we've tried to sit down and talk with each of you related to this list, and we've made some notes. Um, so please, if we've missed anything, or if there's any additional questions or comments, we'll gladly take those and go back and, um, modify as, as needed. Um, so if it's okay, I'll just go one by one, if that works for the, the group. So the, the first two line items, the Acres Mill Road, managed lane access, and then the Wendy Hill Road, Tiramill Road Connector Project, both borrowed dollars to fund our Wendy Tiramill Project, so we're just gonna plus those back. So that's the, the four million dollars right there totaled for those two projects. We would ask to be able to take revenue above projections and put back into those existing projects, so they can continue to move forward. We have, um, resurfacing dollars shown on the listing, fifteen million dollars. That would get us to around the amount that we spend typically in a, in a fiscal year. Um, we can always make considerations if needed, because I know that's a very large dollar amount. Um, Willio Road over Willio Creek, I know Commissioner Garmbrill helped us catch a, a mistake that we had in our list, so thank, thank you for that, Commissioner. Um, you'll, you'll notice that the current budget is the three point zero zero three million that was awarded in December of this year for the project, and then the actual delta for that project, um, would be the four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars that would, would be needed to, to clean that project and get the total expenses needed for that, that project. We have Stentown Road, which is a twenty sixteen project. Um, if, if you look in the project, but the twenty sixteen manual, you'll see that this project initially was from Powder Springs all the way to Osteau. We broke that project in half. The portion from Powder Springs to the roundabout, or, or West Side Drive Beach Haven, um, was a joint project with the city of Marietta, and then we also carried that forward from that point down to Osteau Road. Um, you'll see that the current, our original budget on that project was one point six, and as we've gotten into the, the process of looking at the safety and operational improvements needed along that corridor, um, that, that dollar amount is, is not sufficient to, to build all the needs along the corridor, so we're asking for an additional amount of one point eight million, so that, that, that project can be constructed to fully meet the needs of that corridor. We also have South Barrett Reliever, Phase Three. So this project, it looks a little deceiving up here. You're showing a cu- current budget of seven point five million, but actually, we have just over twenty-four million dollars that have been allocated to this project through federal and state, um, funding. So to close that gap, and through the, uh, I'm sorry, the Town Center CID had bought, put money into that project. So to close the gap, we need just, just under two million dollars to be able to construct that project that will get us over seventy-five and have a reliever of the Barrett Parkway corridor in, um, the Town Center area. We also have our West Atlanta Street Trail. This, this project, you're gonna see at the current budget, it's three point two million. That includes two and a half million that has been allocated from the Atlanta Regional Commission for federal dollars, so to close the gap on that project is two and a half million dollars. And that connection gets us from Smyrna all the way up into the Town Center, Noonday Creek area, which gives us around a twenty-mile connection of our trail network, plus, um, in the county, to have access to Dobbin's and Jobs in the area. You'll also see our next project is Shallow Road or Royal Drive Apartments. So you'll, you'll see here, um, on this list, that we have currently forty-eight thousand dollars in our budget. Now, if you go back to our twenty sixteen SPOS booklet, you'll see that it was three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and it said intersection improvement. So since that time, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, when we, um, actually reviewed this project, um, we have borrowed money from that project just to plus additional projects money from that project just to plus additional projects that were in this component, but then also realized that a signal would not be warranted for this location, and that most likely, based on some of the traffic patterns and, and needs that we've seen in the area, will most likely be a roundabout for this location. So, that's why there's such a large discrepancy, even at the $348,000, up to almost $3 million. It's a, it's a very large jump, and it's really because of the, the needs and what we've seen in the area since that 2013, 2014 initial description for the project. So, before I go to the next page, I didn't know if anyone had questions or concerns or comments on, on just this list of projects right here.
Thank you for asking. I did have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the South Barrett Reliever, you talked about there being other funds that are not showing here in the budget. Are there other projects like that where this current budget amount may not reflect additional funding?
So, when we expand this entire, this entire listing, you'll see that. So, South Barrett has just over $24 million that are federal, state, and Town Center CID funding. And then, also, the West Atlanta has 2.5 million, around 2.5 million that we've received through the Atlanta Regional Commission for federal dollars.
Okay.
And then, once we get further into it, you'll see Old 41 Highway Corridor has some GTIB dollars also and some federal dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Garmbrill has a question.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, there may be other Commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Garmbrill.
Okay. On the West Atlanta...
Yes, ma'am.
...Street Trail, is the current budget 2.2 or 3.2? It's different on both of these documents.
I'm sorry. So, the current budget, the 3.2 is, and I'll make sure, hold on, I'm sorry. Let me find it. It is...
Because on this one, it's 3.2, Erica.
So, I think...
But on this, this one, it says current budget is 2.2. So, I'm not sure.
Right. So, it's been updated. So, the 3.2 is current, is $2.5 million?
So, this is the more current one?
This should be the more current. Yes, ma'am. So, we realized that we, we, going back through all of our funding, we had, $2.5 million was federal dollars, and then, the other portion that has been allocated is, is what we would do with matched dollars for that project. Yes, ma'am.
So, with that, is there an assumption, then, there may be differences with the printed spreadsheet and the presentation, but the presentation numbers are up to date?
The presentation should be correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll, I'll make sure that that spread, that other spreadsheet gets, gets updated.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions, Commissioners, before we move to the next slide?
Yeah, well, we haven't got to, we have to vote, how, vote for, on how I, is that the bridge replacement?
No, ma'am. This would, I'm sorry. So, the next project on the next page?
Why don't we go ahead and go to the...
Is that okay?
Hold on. I'm sorry, Commissioner, before we go to the next page, does anybody have any questions on that first slide? Okay. Why don't we go to the next slide?
Do I have it? I'm sorry. Thank you. So, the next project, the Old Highway 41 project, is, is the project that runs from Old Stylesborough up to Kennesaw, I think it's Kennesaw Avenue, in front of the, the National Battlefield, Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield. So, it would be the potential project that could have the two roundabouts and then shift the roadway, a, a portion, you know, a piece away from the battlefield, and also has some pedestrian enhancements because of the, the amount of users for the park area when it's really nice outside, to get pedestrians from the overflow park and under Old Stylesborough and get them to the park without having to have safety concerns with them crossing the road over there. So, this one, this one's another one. We, we do have some federal and GTIB dollars in, which is plus what we have included in that project. Right now, we're at $3.7 million with this federal and county dollars. Overall, we, we need another 6.1 million to close the gap on that project. This one's a little bit longer term. We expect this to be a 2022, 2023 project. We're, we're still in the very early, almost finished with the concept, probably go to public information meetings pretty soon, probably this spring. So, it is still a little bit further out, but it's definitely a project that's, that's in our 2016 booklet, and we know that there's a funding gap for. But we could always continue to look to ARC and other partners for additional grant dollars to continue to close that gap. We have our Silver Comet Trail Connector. So, this project is a little, I guess, a little deceiving. So, right now, we don't have any dollars in this one phase. So, PATH Foundation and the philanthropic community had come to the county and said, you know, we're very interested in continuing the Silver Comet Trail from East-West Connector all the way into Fulton County and closing that gap. So, they've broken it into two pieces. Phase One gets us close to Plant Atkinson, and it'll go back towards the East-West Connector. Georgia DOT has $14 million allocated to help purchase right-of-way, and then, PATH Foundation is, is pulling mon, funds together to build the construction piece of that project. Then, the section from Plant Atkinson up to Atlanta Road to get us to the bridge over into Fulton County, PATH Foundation has actually put money into design of that project, and they're asking the county to actually fund right-of-way purchase and then construction to help close that gap from East-West Connector all the way into Fulton County to finally tie into the Belt Line. So, that, so we, we don't show that we have any money in there. They, they have some dollars that are allocated towards just for PE of that project for that one phase that they're asking for help on.
Thank you. And this may get to what Commissioner Garmbrill is talking about, things not being specifically listed, because we have a general pot for sidewalk trails. So, I know when this organization approached me, I, I had already committed my sidewalk funds for it. So, this is just one of those bucket items for consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Then, we have our, our Powder Springs Road Trail, and this is one that was, is, it'll be a great connection once it's actually constructed, and this will bring, so right now, we're fixing to go, I think we're advertising the Kenno, the Kennesaw Mountain Trail project. And so, it would, it would have a connection that comes down Chitum Hill to tie into Powder Springs, and then, from that point, tie into the, the trail network that has come from the City of Marietta towards county services. I believe we have the PE funds that have been designated from Commissioner Garmbrill's sidewalk dollars. The hope, so we're showing a gap of $4.5 million. That would get us from, with the PE funds, right-of-way utilities and construction. This is also one that, you know, as long as Silver Comet, Powder Springs, there's a lot of these projects that always go to the ARC and our, our partners to see if there's ways to, to request additional funding for. But this is definitely one that's been identified. It's a great project for that connectivity. It's a transit route, and then also having pedestrian access. So, we, we have it shown in here as, as a potential for consideration for revenue above projections. We have Stout Parkway-Brownsville Extension. So, this, this is another one that's a little different. This is right on the, on the boundary of Paulding and Cobb County. It's a project that was in the '05 SPOLOST, I believe. It was a partner project with, with Paulding County, and it actually realigned the intersection. Since that time, there have been numerous accidents at this location, and, and Paulding County submitted this project to their district office at Georgia DOT to request some funding assistance, safety dollars for. So, Georgia DOT has actually identified that project as a, as a project to move along and has stated that they'll fund 80% of that project if the locals would split the 20% match to move that project forward. So, right now, that's another ask that we would hope to use federal, state, local matched dollars for to move that project forward. We also have our Chattahoochee River Trail Phase One Pilot Project. So, this is one that we identified $1 million out of the District Four Sidewalk funding for, and we're, we're showing an additional $3 million need to fund the gap for the pilot project. This is part of the Trust for Public Land, Atlanta Regional Commission, that initiative that, that come about to look at actually a conceptual idea of bringing a trail along the Chattahoochee from up, up, down all the way, I think, past Noonan. So, this would be the pilot project. So, we, we did want to show funding for this. We also have our Osteel Road Transfer Center. It's a multimodal improvements. We, we've talked about Osteel, that, that South Cobb area needing a, a transfer center in the past. This has been designated in our federal, state, local component, at least in the 16th SPOLOST. It may have been in the '11 or the '05. So, we're, we're showing $6 million. This is one that we could, we could make considerations for as we, we talk about the revenue above projections, if, if there was a need to just look for matching dollars. We can always go to the Atlanta Regional Commission and FTA to help find dollars to match, to move that project along. We also have Oakdale Road at Buckner Road. This is a project, I think, that's listed in the Smyrna Tier One project list. We, we have a lot of constituents call and have requests for Oakdale Road and Buckner Road. So, this is one that we, we have shown listed as just some funding, as a partner project with the City of Smyrna, to do some conceptual, maybe some very early preliminary engineering work to tee that project up for potential in the 2022 SPOLOST. Then, we have Circle 75 Parkway at Wendy Hill Road. This is, Wendy, Circle 75 was a 2016 project, and since we've done all of the, the work along that corridor, there has been an issue that has been identified at Circle 75 and Wendy Hill Road. And this would help add an additional lane in there to help reduce the congestion that we're having in that area. And then, the last project listed on this sheet is our Old Floyd Road at Veterans Memorial Highway, which really is identified because of a, a future road closure at a, at grade railroad crossing. And once that closure takes place, the amount of traffic that will be funneled to other corridors in the area will have a, a pretty significant traffic impact for those citizens in the area. This project's listed at $3 million. We, we do know that the railroad will be a partner, and so will Georgia DOT. We don't have any numbers, hard numbers right now. We think the railroad is about $100,000, and Georgia DOT, we're, we're still talking about that. They're trying to see what funding they would have available, but that would definitely be a, a partner project that we would ask the board to consider enhancing or, or helping us with the closure of Church Street. So, before we go to the next page...
I, I did. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Erica?
Yes, ma'am.
For the city projects on this page?
Just the Oakdale Road at Buckner. Yes, ma'am.
What was the amount of revenue above projections that the cities got? Didn't they already get their amount?
Yes, Commissioner, they received theirs every month that we receive ours. So, when we hit the 750 mark, 750 million mark, they began receiving their additional collections as well. If you remember, we brought back an agenda item to allow us to increase the budgets to the cities each and every month based on the collections that we receive. So, they get a straight 26% of the overall collection. So, as we do well, they do well. So, they, they are going through the same process that we are to identifying how they're going to be using their revenue of our projections as well.
Okay.
Okay.
But for these joint projects, is the, is the full amount being requested, or is it split?
So, this sheet just shows Oakdale at Buckner, and we would do a split with them. So, we're, we're showing 300,000, probably for the conceptual piece. So, we would look at a, probably a 50/50 split. At least 300,000, maybe, county portion, maybe 200 or 150,000. But right now, we're just showing the 300,000. If you go to the next slide...
I'm sorry. Which one are you talking about?
This is Oakdale Road at Buckner Road. It's, if you're looking at the PowerPoint, it's different than the spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
So, the PowerPoint has it listed on, on one of the slides, and the others are, are listed on the next, the next slide. But those, those are shown as the counties, counties split out of the request between all the cities.
Okay. And my point is, if they're getting revenue above projections and we're getting revenue above projections, and they're joint projects, shouldn't it be an even split, or are we being asked to cover the full amount?
No, ma'am.
Of over projection?
No, ma'am. There, there is definitely a split.
Okay.
So, yeah, so when we, if you, well, let's stay on, is it okay to stay on the sheet before we go to the next ones?
Certainly. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'll get to those when we get over there, Commissioner, just so it's, it's clear when we walk through them, if that's okay.
Okay. So, this is what we're supposed to be looking at?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the big split?
And echoing that, the next slide, you said you will show the split, but it's Oakdale Road at Buckner Road, not one of those projects that will have a split?
It, it, it will. We, we just spoke, we just talked with them yesterday.
Okay.
We, we had our conversation about Wendy Hill, and we talked to them about this one yesterday. So, we were still talking money, but we, we think it would be around the 300, and they would consider doing a, a share of that with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The Smyrna Wendy Hill is what I'm concerned about.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the, they need 5 billion, correct?
Well, they, they, they need over 5 million. So, if we did, if we did a true split based on the numbers that we received last week, they, based on the, the actual percentage that we put into the project and what they've been, put into the project, the amount over budget right now is around 14 million. So, we, we showed 5 million in our original, or when we've talked about this project. And if we, if we did a true split, it would be closer to 6.5, 6.6 million that would meet those guidelines. Now, because we didn't know that initial number, we went with 5 million when we, when we walked the halls with that discussion. But since that discussion with them this week, we, we found out that gap is a little bigger than we thought, and it's about 14, 12 to 14 million, I think 12 and 1/2. But it was, it was around 6.5 million. It would be the, the county's share of that.
So, why are we reducing it to 1 million?
That was just a scenario that, that we were showing to the board.
Well, we need, we need to know the true numbers of what it's going to take to make it...
I think this is one of those things that Commissioner Garmbrill is getting to, where you know the project really could have a, a larger amount of funds go towards it to manage all of the other requests that delta's been brought lower, knowing that it's not going to get you fully where you want the project to go. So, this is part of that discussion. If we want to plus that up to six, we'd have to look at this column and find 5 million from the other projects to put it there.
It is. Yes, ma'am.
It is.
Okay. Sorry.
Don't apologize, it's a good questions. Commissioner Garmbrill?
Since we're talking about big, big expenses, the Chattahoochee River Trail, I mean, that's coming out at 6.1 million a mile to build for a sidewalk. And again, I'm not against sidewalks, but 6.1 million for a sidewalk seems a little excessive.
I don't see 6.1 million.
The, the pilot project, engineering and construction was around 4 million.
I'm sorry.
Is around 4 million for the, the pilot, for the engineering and the, and the construction.
Yeah, so I'm not understanding the 6 million.
Because usually, we add that all together in the total project cost. So, this project is going to come to over 12.2 million. So, if you divide it by the number of miles, that's 6.1 miles. And just for perspective, this 12.1 million is usually just a little less than what we fund yearly for resurfacing. So, if I have to prioritize something, I'm going to prioritize our roads, which see 50, 60,000 cars on them a day, then a sidewalk trail that the number of users is unknown on a daily basis. So, if we're talking about prioritization, that's how I prioritize.
I, I can perceive where that could be a challenge. This project extends beyond just a trail. So, there's really looking at creating a place for that entire project, for people to enjoy the river. So, there was a master plan that was shared with the board last year that showed the full scope of that, and it, it exceeds the trail, but this is just the first, this is just the beginning. And Commissioner Sheffield, forgive me for speaking for this project in your area, I'm just speaking from my familiarity, knowing it's in your, the district where you serve. But, yeah, this is a comprehensive effort to create the, the river as an amenity for the community. And we can, if, it would be helpful, it might be helpful to share the entire master plan for the board, so they're aware of what is being considered.
But in addition to sharing the entire master plan, it was told to me that there is not buy-in from all the cities and jurisdictions that cover this 125 miles. So, while there's this great master plan out, out there, there is no buy-in from all 125 miles that this touches, nor is there funding to do the project. So, again, if it's about prioritizing where we should be spending our dollars to best benefit Cobb County, this is not a project I could prioritize.
I, yeah, I'll just respectfully disagree, and then I'll add, other Commissioners, you have buy-in, you had buy-in from a majority of the board. And while this may not have complete buy-in along the trail, this would be a tremendous shot in the arm, as our former Commissioner, Woody Thompson, would say, for this community. If you look at where the Chattahoochee Trail has been, a river has been developed as trailway in the metro area, you typically don't see it in this part of town, to just be frank. This project that has been put forward provides all communities access to this beautiful amenity that we have that stretches 30 miles through our metro area. If it were to only stretch two miles along the Chattahoochee River or one mile for this community, it is going to add a tremendous asset for that community to enjoy. So, I am fully in support of the board's decision to support this project last year. And it may be such as the other parks are, may go phase by phase, and may not get everything not just for the area, but when the other community and for the whole metro area. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I was just gonna share regarding this project. I would think it's not a complete picture to simply classify it as a trail. It is an economic opportunity, economic development opportunity that's not just about mobility, but also all of the potential business that may come from that trail existing. So I don't think using the mileage would be an accurate assessment of the value that it could bring. Your point is well-received with regards to prioritization, but it is a bigger scope from an apples-to-oranges comparison than a trail. And I would look at the, you know, understood that the 125 miles may not have all stakeholders in agreement, but for the portion of Cobb County, there is definitely consensus with the adjoining communities there, not to mention the potential draw from communities that are surrounding those communities as well. So it is, I would say it's a benefit to Cobb County in general.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Absolutely. And, you know, it is definitely an asset to that area, and it's an asset or amenity that has been a long time coming, quite candidly. There is a beautiful development along Riverview Road to which this will be adjacent to. Also, it's in close proximity to Discovery Park. And it's more than just trails, it's more than just sidewalks. There are opportunity zones there, there are educational zones there. It will invite additional businesses, attractions to the community. And it's just a project that I would be fully behind. Now, it does stretch for quite a distance, and we may not have everyone on board at this time, but there is a lot of interest in this project, not just for the immediate area, but even right on the other side of Fulton County. So it would definitely bring an amenity to the community that's been a long time coming.
Were there any other questions of these projects before we move to the next sheet?
I think you're going to the next, yes, we can go to the next one.
This is the next listing. So these are projects that we either have heard from the board for consideration, and we wanted to share with the board, or the city projects other than the Oakdale at Buckner. So the first project that you'll see is our Acworth D. West at Jim Owens Mars Hill Church Road Roundabout Project. So after the retreat, we actually had a conversation with the school board. And with this project, the roundabout is pretty close in proximity to an elementary school, I think it's an elementary school. And parents, as they go pick their childrens up in the afternoon, are queuing into the roundabout, and it's kind of closing the roundabout down for about 10 to 15 minutes at a time during the day. So they come to us and said, hey, can you help us with improvements inside right away? We're gonna do some things internal to the site. There may be some things you can do external to the site also that we're looking at. So we'd like to ask the board if they would be interested in putting some dollars away for us to help contribute to funding and fixing that request for the roundabout, and for the parents to be able to get in and out of the site. We could look at a phased approach that could start at around 100,000 and then just step it up. We also, I'm talking with Commissioner Burl. If you look in the 16 program, it may have been in the 11. Also, there was a Canton Road corridor project with the intersection improvement at Shallowford Road, and it was a lot more expensive and extensive than we expected. So we had to scale back a lot of the enhancements that we had considered for Canton Road. So one project that's really come out of that is Canton Road at Piedmont, a consideration at around 1.2 million out of that original Canton Road corridor bucket that could go towards that project. We also had a Commissioner, I think Commissioner Burl, also asked about additional request or funding considerations for sidewalks within the districts. So we're showing 1 million. You know, we're, obviously, at the board's discretion, if we need to shift and move, we're gonna, we're gonna take direction from you. But we felt like this was worthwhile to show with each Commissioner. And then we have the South Cobb Gateway Project, which was a project that is listed in our 16 booklet also. We use those funds to go and receive a grant from, I'm not sure, I can't remember who it was, but there's a really nice area in South Cobb now that's adjacent to the EpiCenter down there at 20. It's gonna be a great location and doing a lot of things down there. With the grant and the funding that we had available, the 100,000 dollars available in there, it's not gonna get us to where we really want to be with that project. So we're asking for some consideration for that. And then we also have the three city projects that are actually joint projects with the county that are a little underfunded. So Mac Dobbs is a project in the City of Kennesaw. We had three joint projects with the City of Kennesaw, and this one, we had, is the last one to go, that will be going into construction, and we're a little short on it. We also have Powder Springs Road at Flint Hill Road, Pine Grove, Pine Grove Road, in the City of Powder Springs. This was a joint project. City led this project. We had multiple scenarios considered for that location. The best fit for that location wound up being a traffic signal, not just some realignment in the area. So the cost of the project went well above what the original amount was considered for in the SPOS booklet. It'll be a 50-50 split, so they're asking for 1 million dollars for that also. And then we have our Wendy Hill Road, our Wendy Hill Boulevard with the City of Smyrna. So right now, we're showing 1 million. What really, the real ask would probably be a little over 6 million, but that's gonna bump us up pretty good in there. But that gets us about, it's not a true 50-50 split, it's about a 54, 47 in there with the city funding a little bit more. You know, they realize as well as we do, revenue above projections are very precious, and we need to be very good stewards with our money. So, you know, anything that could be considered, I know they would be very appreciative for, and we would too, to continue that project.
Commissioner, I mean...
So this should be the last of our projects, I'm sorry.
I'm increasing your title to Commissioner, but Director, the sidewalks, which I appreciate being in here, we know can be a very costly item. The last I heard, sidewalks were over a million dollar per mile.
Yes, ma'am.
So this allocation, you know, gets every Commissioner for a whole district less than a mile of sidewalk. Are there any matching funds for sidewalks beyond what we put forward through our SPOS program?
There could be. I know in the past, we, I know we have utilized some FTA dollars. So if there are sidewalks on transit routes, then we have to follow a federal process. So it makes it a little bit more expensive and a little bit more cumbersome. Also, with our last, the Atlanta Regional Commission, you know, we had a different type project we submitted for consideration, which was some funds for sidewalks on transit routes for less mile connectivity or filling the gaps, or replacement of ramps or things that didn't meet ADA compliance. And it looks like we're gonna receive those dollars. So there could be consideration for programs such as those that we could look into if we had matching dollars for.
Okay. I appreciate you, though, at least adding this. Because again, to add anything to this, increase anything, take something from somewhere else.
Yes, ma'am. So with the direction that we receive, our expectation is we would live within the 61 million. Of course, it'll be the board's discretion of how these all fall out and what agency receives what. But, you know, once we have that direction, we can, we'll definitely make adjustments and make additional considerations for the board and for Jamie and Dr. McMorris as we move through this till March.
Thank you.
Any other questions for those last projects?
Any other questions, Commissioners, or Erica? Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. Next on our list is the Sheriff's Department. In the 2016 SPOS program, the Sheriff's Department only received around 3.4, 3.5 million. And as you know, since Sheriff Owens has been in office now, we're starting to realize there's, there are quite a few things in the detention facility, as well as the courthouse facility, that are needing attention. So I believe we've got, who do we have today? Duane Morris and Braxton Cotton with the Sheriff's Department. You want to come just scan through this real quick for the Commissioners?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first item is the exterior maintenance to replace the roof at the workplace. These are basically some maintenance issues that have gone undone, and it's time for, the roof on the workplace was built in '97. That's where they get the numbers from, and it's never been replaced or updated. So we need to get those repairs of the building, fencing and signage. This is for the jail complex. The interior maintenance is for the jail. It's been a while since we've done any maintenance to the jail. And from the presentation at the retreat, you can see the, some of the stuff is in disrepair. And we're asking to reallocate 7.1. The next portion is the judicial, just the jail technology. That's just to add, to get the, we've still got computers working off Microsoft 7 or Windows 7, and a lot of it hadn't been updated throughout the years. And that, our jail is pretty expansive, so 2 million is just gonna hit part of it. I mean, it's just getting us through to get some of the stuff updated so we can get some computers and jail management software that works updated. The security update and the judicial complex is mandated by law. The sheriff has to do one each year and provide it to the judge, the chief judge. That is, that'll be part of another presentation, but the automatic, these things are just...
Can you go back to that? Can you go back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
So just the plan itself is 1.6 million?
Yes, ma'am. It's four phases.
Okay, I see.
Yes, ma'am. Braxton Cotton. So the way this plan is set up, it has already been approved and signed off by the chief judge. So initially, implementation of the program for the first two phases is what you see here at 1.6.
So it's not just the plan, it's implementation of a plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
It's a plan, and then it's got four steps or four phases to fully integrate and be compliant with the plan that we provided to the chief judge.
I was wondering what consultant firm I had to go join.
Right. This is phase one and two, and there's phase three and four that is another 2 million.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
That started. At the jail, we use heavy-duty equipment, and it's time to, a triple tank tray washer to wash the inmate trays, transport vehicles, our buses and our handicap van, access vans. We've got two large buses, I think four handicap van transports, so we can transport them from the jail to the court complex. Washing machines and dryers are commercial. The way they get our maintenance gets around the jail complex, which sits on 11 acres, is they use Polaris electrical vehicles to haul and do all the maintenance from all the different buildings. We're asking to replace those. Furniture for the jail, those chairs and some of the furniture utilized at the jail has been there since it was built. They haven't, it's never been updated, so we're asking to replace a lot of the chairs and some of the furniture so that, actually, they're functional. They're still there, but they've been there for 10, 12 years. And the wear and tear on them, right now, it's, you know, the inmate population's down, but hopefully it'll stay that way. But, you know, when the pandemic gets out of the way, it might pick back up. The evidence room, we have an evidence room that's downstairs on our building, which is on the square, which doesn't, we're getting, we're attempting to get all our certifications, Calea certifications and jail certifications, and one of those things to get up to standards, we're gonna have to invest in our evidence room. Because there's certain protocol that we have to follow and make sure that, you know, we're honest and transparent with everybody's evidence and stuff we take in. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Okay. The next, Randy, I might be able to handle it. We've got three fire stations, which were, the general fund forwarded or advanced some money to construct those. So we're asking to reimburse the general fund from the... What did I say?
General fund.
Fire fund. You worried about that money, ain't you? Back to the fire fund. Okay, property management. Switzer Library, an additional 1.7 million is needed. You know, once they got into that, into that project, they determined that the roof had to be replaced. That's been dealt with. A lot of the wall's leaking, some of the components that had to be changed. So 1.7 million is needed for Switzer. Gritters, an additional 2 million to add to the 2.95. Now, if it is number six on the list for the state grant, if the state grant does come through, then this can come off. But it, yes, ma'am?
Switzer's in District 3. Used to be District 1.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add there, it certainly would be a boon for us if the state does fund gritters. And so I just ask the Commissioners if we can help support this project in us submitting a letter to our legislators above and beyond what was shared today with the other pieces of legislation that may help.
We did mention that to them in the brief, and we've had ongoing conversation, but you're absolutely right. Some type of an endorsement letter from the Commission would go along with it.
It was on the original list from Director Tanks for gritters. So the 2 million would, and it is on the list, you know.
Yes, number six right now.
Not number one.
Right. It all depends on how much the State Library Foundation receives and how they distribute those funds. The cabinet shop, an additional 671,000 for that. We're finding that the cost to build a new cabinet shop would be enormous right now, so we're looking at warehouse space and then moving all of our equipment over into that. And the role that they play in our county is huge, so we need to make sure that we can get them into a good space. The fleet car facility, an additional 1 million is needed for that one. And then on the medical examiner's office, some of, some small items were VE'd out of their construction project at the end, totaling about 120,000. So any in-depth questions on property? And I can get Mr. Barfield up to...
Am I confusing another line item for the medical examiner? Okay, maybe that was in the budget discussion.
Yeah, the other one was the 8 million.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
It was a payback for the general fund.
It was a payback. Okay, support services, basically IAS. The first item is another phase of the Unified Court Case Management System. It's the land records portion. It has, it's kind of come into the spreadsheet now, in and out a couple times. But in talking with the clerk of the Superior Court, easy for me to say, she is ready to proceed with that now. And then the last item is the middle component of the security system for the judicial complex, as well as the adult detention center. If you remember, there was, they're getting a portion of the funding through 2021 Capital, a portion here in the revenue above projections, as well as there's funding in the 2022 SPOS, totaling about 15 million. And that's the one that Sheriff Owens was talking about if we're one light and strike away. So we feel like that's a pretty high priority. So that is, that's a total of what has been presented to us and what we've compiled. If you remember, there was, they're getting a portion of the funding through 2021 capital, a portion here in the revenue above projections, as well as there's funding in the 2022 SPOS, totaling about $15 million. And that's the one that Sheriff Owens was talking about if we're one light and strike away. So we feel like that's a pretty high priority. So that is, that's a total of what has been presented to us and what we've compiled. From this point forward, we will take the board's direction. In a perfect scenario, we'd like to be able to bring you back a list at the first meeting in March, or the second meeting in March, just based on your timeframe. If that requires us to sit down with each one of you, again, now that you've seen a lot more of the information and heard more detail, we can do that to get your priorities, and then put a final sheet together for presentation. Any overall comments, or?
If we were to support what you presented here today, is there sufficient money with the revenue above projections today?
There is, except for that last slide of DOT.
With the city and county?
The city projects on it and that. There is funding for everything except for that one slide.
Are there additional questions or comments from the board? Yes, Commissioner?
So Bill, every transaction that was made out of the general fund to cover a SPOS project, has that been covered here in the presentation? Because I feel like we're missing something. Like I know the library, Switzer Library, I believe we took from the capital fund to redo the roof on that. Why are we not reimbursing the general fund?
It's part of that request, it's part of that request, it will be repaid. So you'll see the line item budget in, on that line for Switzer Library, whatever funds, I think it was around 1.2, 1.2 million dollars was taken and moved to SPOS, that will be repaid, but they are requesting some additional funds beyond that. So our priority, well, I can't speak, the recommendation would be to repay all of the outstanding IOUs, and then that is absolutely covered here, anything from general fund to fire fund, to anything else that would be capital projects. I'll have to go back and look to see where the 1.2 came from exactly, but yes, those are included, and those are proposed to be repaid.
Okay, because it's, that doesn't say that here, then we go back.
Yes, and we will make sure that when we, if we get direction, and that is a priority, that you will see all the IOUs come back as an interfund transfer from the SPOS fund to the originating funds, and we can even identify the corresponding agenda items that was done to initiate the original funds as a part of that, absolutely.
Yeah, I must say, there was, certainly appreciate the presentations today, just the explanation of the delta could have been even longer, more robust to explain some of the things that were shared here verbally. Appreciate any additional clarification you could provide to the board, so if we don't have continuing questions. Commissioner Burrell, yes ma'am?
Can you identify those on the revised sheet with an asterisk or something, and identify the ones that we need to reimburse first? Thank you.
And Chairwoman and Commissioners, I just want you all to make sure that off the top, we make sure that our cities are made whole with whatever funding they would receive for revenue above projection. So the cities come off the top, and then we look at the next category of repaying whatever fund, the general fund or the fire fund, and then we look at the projects. So we pay off our bills first, we pay off our debt.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you for your time today, gentlemen, appreciate it, and to all of our directors and staff who've been here for this presentation. With that, I believe that ends our work session. We'll be back here tonight at 7 o'clock PM for our regular board meeting.